Thanks again, everyone, for joining us this morning. I think we're going to go ahead and get the meeting started. We're sat here, looks like everyone's seated. So we're going to call the meeting today, the Town Council Special Meeting of Friday, December 1st, 2023, to order. It's 9:05 in the morning, and we will start off with our call to order, please.
Councilmembers Abel.
Here.
Droz. Lombardo.
Here.
Schooler.
Here.
And Mayor Jensen.
Here. Okay, following that, if you would all join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. We'll do that first, and then we'll get started. Thank you. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for And thank you for that. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead a little bit. We just report, we just came out of closed session, and for reporting, I'll turn it over to council.
Thank you. The Town Council met in closed session with respect to the item on the closed session agenda, and there's no reportable action on that item, and that concludes the report.
Thank you very much. Well, we have quite a crowd here tonight, and so we're going to go ahead and get started. Tonight, we have only one item on the agenda, that'll be Senior Mobile Home Park Moratorium Urgency Ordinance. Staff, for report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you mentioned, the item before you is an urgency ordinance that imposes a moratorium prohibiting any mobile home park in the town from converting from a senior-only mobile home park to a mobile home park that accepts residents of all ages. The law requires that I read the title of the ordinance, so I'm just going to do that right now. Ordinance number 308, An Interim Urgency Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Yucca Valley, California, Establishing a Moratorium on the Conversion Change of Any Mobile Home Park Currently Existing in the Town From a Park Occupied Primarily or Exclusively by Residents Over the Age of 55 Years (Senior Residents) to a Mobile Home Park Allowing Residents of All Ages and Declaring the Urgency Thereof to Take Effect Immediately. The Town Council has long recognized the need to provide housing which is affordable to senior citizens. Senior-only mobile home parks represent a viable option for senior-only living, and the town currently has six senior-only mobile home parks, and the town has also committed through its housing element in the general plan to preserve the existing affordable housing stock and to maintain housing for special housing needs groups like senior citizens. So, the item being proposed is an urgency ordinance because the town has been made aware that an existing mobile home park is seeking to convert from a senior-only mobile home park to an all-age facility. Important to recognize that this ordinance today, should you choose to approve it, will not make any changes within the town. Its purpose is to preserve the status quo. So, for your consideration this morning is to adopt this moratorium by at least a four-fifths vote, and because there are only four of you here tonight, that means a, all four of you must, must vote in the affirmative. And this moratorium, again, will prevent the conversion of senior-only mobile home parks to all-age facilities, and the purpose is to allow the town time to study whether it wants to adopt a permanent zoning ordinance. So during the time period that this moratorium is in place, town staff will study and analyze and consider developing a new zoning regulation that would help preserve senior mobile home parks. And that could include the possibility of developing a permanent ordinance which creates a senior-only mobile home park overlay zone. If the council adopts this urgency ordinance this morning, it will be in place for 45 days. At a future meeting, the council can choose to extend that ordinance for another 10 months and 15 days, and then you can then extend it after that for another year, which would give you a total of two years. So in summary, the effect of the urgency ordinance in front of you this morning is to put a temporary pause on the conversion of senior mobile home parks to all-age facilities. This pause gives town, gives the town time to research and study whether it wants to adopt a permanent zoning ordinance and could create a senior mobile home park overlay zone or any other permanent zoning regulations. That concludes the report. Happy to answer any questions.
Oh, thank you for that. Any other staff comments? I'll bring it back to council. I'd like to start off and reinforce what council has just mentioned, just for clarity for everyone. The item at hand today is item number one on the agenda, and item number one, as council said, is basically a pause on any change in the status of considered, excuse me, senior mobile home parks. So we need that time. It'll be a temporary pause for 45 days with opportunities for extension. All of those items are listed in the agenda today, which is available online, or I believe copies are available here today, so that'll provide more clarity of what we're doing today. With a lot of people here this evening, or this morning, we're so used to being here at night, so I apologize about that. Council, I think, did the same thing. We're going to look, change, try and change our operation a little bit as far as speaking. There will be people that'll come up. I know there's cards with the clerk already to speak, and I'm really trying to get a feel, there's so many people in here, and I want everyone to be able to participate. So if there's discussion and you're in favor of the comments being made, please raise your hand, because we want to get through as quickly as we can, but that'll give the council an opportunity to visually see what's going on and understand the direction that most of the people or some of the people are looking for. And the same, if it's in, if it's a different item, you just have to make sure that you're going for what they're talking about, and just leave it at that. Good decorum is what we're looking for here in clarity. So with that, we're going to let council start off with, with any comments, and then we'll bring it up for a public comment, okay? Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. We have a request to speak by.
Leslie, I'm sorry, they're going to have council comments here first, and then that'll open up to public comment in just a minute.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, so we'll start off with Councilmember Abel.
All right. Well, first of all, I would like to thank the Town Council and staff for moving so quickly on this particular item. I was able to attend a meeting earlier where it was proposed some bylaw changes that were going on in the park, and I understand that the bylaws that are under review and up for discussion include many items that the Town of Yucca Valley has no jurisdiction over or no say on, but we do have one item that we can address, and that's the, the senior housing element. And so, an option as what we have today would to, to be able to do a moratorium so that we can further study the pros and cons behind an overlay map. We understand that your concerns are now our concerns as well, and so I was very pleased that I was able to bring it to a council meeting right after that initial meeting at Gates of Spain and bring it to the council for possible agenda item in the future, and each and every one of the council members agreed that it was a very important issue, and they placed it on, on a future agenda, and that's why we're here today. So I want to thank my council members and staff for moving so quickly, because I know a lot of anxiety, a lot of pressure, either warranted or unwarranted, can build up, and so you'd sort of like to know how we're going to move forward on this. Again, we are just looking at a temporary stay. We're not talking about permanent policy because we haven't had time to study all the specifics. So I just want to let you know that, again, I appreciate your attendance here today, and I'm very much in support of, of moving forward with an emergency ordinance or urgency ordinance so that we would have time to study this without any other parks being converted or possibly converted until we finally make a final decision. Gates of Spain is just one of six parks, I believe, was mentioned, so it's not just if you're a Gates of Spain resident, it's the entire senior community, and it's for the future seniors as well, people that aren't maybe in a mobile home park right now but see that as a viable option. We all come and change our housing through the years due to necessity, and so I know that each and every one of you that are in a senior mobile home park had the assumption that it would remain that, that's what you invested in, and so I'm very, again, pleased that our council, our mayor, and our staff moved quickly to bring this today. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Councilmember Schooler.
Yes, I'd like to thank Councilmember Abel for responding to this community concern in a timely way, and also thanks staff for putting it together. I'm, I've visited several senior mobile home parks, and I find the mobile home parks for seniors to be an affordable option, safe environment, provides for independence within a community of seniors, and certainly contributes to a desirable quality of life. To change that, I think is, well, there are 26 pages of rules and regulations at this particular mobile home park, and, and we're only talking about one, one issue here today, and to change that from a senior environment to an all-ages environment seems to be threatening and, and probably not, not a good outcome considering our need for senior housing in this community, and, and it, it just doesn't seem like a wise thing to do. So I do support the moratorium. I think, again, this is one item out of 26 pages of rules, you know, that, that we're dealing with, and we're not interested in dealing with the other items, but this one affects the entire community into the future, so I would, I am in support of this moratorium.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
I was unknowledgeable in this area to a large extent, but I have always been a supporter of community, especially for senior citizens. My mother's 95, and I saw the benefit when she was isolated in her older style of home, and when we moved her to an area where she was around other seniors, how she livened back up, and it's an important part of your mental health to be around others and to be in a community, and so I'm very much in favor of knowing more about this. I confess my ignorance on the actual living in a mobile home. I have not done that. I, I did that for a very brief time in my early career when I lived in a mobile home in a prison, next to a prison. I was the dentist at a prison. And I do, now that I think back on that, that was the early phase in my life, and yeah, was a different way of living, and I, I can see the benefits for the elderly citizens being together in a safe environment where there's like quality of life and, and that ability to communicate and, and yet have your own privacy. So I'm very much in finding out more about this. I think the only way to do that and to study it thoroughly, to get a better understanding of it for me, is to have this pause and the ability to extend it into the future for two years. It gives us time to, to really look into it. Maybe we can come to an early decision, but I need to know more about it, and I, I want to hear from you. I'm really thankful that so many of you have attended. I think it's, we're going to be an interesting morning, and hopefully we'll get some information that'll help us move forward on the right course, and I thank you for all coming.
All right, well, thank you. I just want to say a couple things here. One is, once again, we're here for the item at hand, and this is for the urgency ordinance that council has stated in full, and there'll be plenty of opportunities, if this moves forward today, there'll be plenty of opportunities to full, have full discussion on the item about what we're trying to accomplish here on both sides. And by, by that, it means everyone can come up and speak freely, and the council can speak freely on individual concerns. This today is the only item on the agenda, so it kind of prevents us from really getting in the weeds on other items until it's on, on the agenda itself. So with that, remember, please take the time to raise your hands when you hear a comment that, that you're in favor of. That'll be very helpful for us. So we'll start off now with the clerk, if you can call the speakers.
Good morning. Our first request to speak is from James Howlett. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. I appreciate your concern over the senior citizen mobile home parks and this, starting off with this moratorium. It's very much appreciated. I, I appreciated Mr. Abel's comments, Mr. Lombardo, yes, all of you, thank you very much, and Mr. Thomas, so, thank you. My concern is, I, like you, I have lived in several nice homes throughout my time, and I, after my five children left, I moved to a mobile home park, something I thought I'd never do. I appreciated when we moved to the Gates of Spain that we were told we had to be 55 or older, so that was my expectation. No children, the park looked well-maintained with the owners at that time, and the safety conditions were noted throughout. No parking on the street. Well, since the now owners have taken over, there is parking in the street causing issues when family come over, there's issues of parking. So my concern in brief is this, I'm worried about the safety, if you allow, if all family, all age families were allowed to move into the park. I'm worried about the expectation of the living conditions that will change when young ones move in, nothing against youth, but we've all been young and we know how that works. So we appreciate the mobile home park for 55 and older and the safety and security. We are older at this time in our life, we appreciate the quietness, we appreciate the safety of seeing our neighbors walking down the street without concern for racing cars or for other family and friends of young ones coming over, creating issues. A lot of our older ones are, have conditions of health, and that health can be jeopardized when an all-family park is instituted in that area. This park was not designed for families. I am a retired deputy building official, and I'm a fire marshal, and I understand how these things work. So I've been to many parks in my time where, with riding with fire, where children have been hit, run over, killed, because these parks were all family parks, and they were playing around and things happened, and older ones were actually hurt as well. So we appreciate the fact that you consider this moratorium for the older ones in this park and for the conditions of health that are of concern and of safety. That's our concern. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. All right, and thank you very much for letting us know how you feel out there. Next, please.
Thanks. Next, we have Roger Littell.
Roger. Good morning. I just wanted to give you guys a, a little suggestion. Number of years ago, before I got brains and moved up here out of Cathedral City, I was on a committee that had rent control and other items on mobile homes only, and I'd suggest that you look up Cathedral City versus Royal Palms Mobile Home Park and get some facts that have been cleared to the state, Supreme Court, and the mobile home park owners lost. So anyway, just a suggestion, thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Next, we have Dory Abel, will be followed by Lori Mendoza.
Good morning, Dory Abel, Yucca Valley. I'm coming as a realtor, as well as a citizen. I'm of the age to be able to live in the park, but I don't either. My concern is that we don't have enough senior housing as it is, and if these people try to even sell their place to move out, where are they going to go? And what I've run across, I have three listings in the park right now, is that many people don't even qualify for the price that it costs for their space rent now, and how are they going to go somewhere else? Because, you know, the cost of living right now. I'm just thankful that you guys are, are having this meeting, and the lawyer that day had said, well, it's up to the town, they can do some more senior housing somewhere else, and I said, why would we do that when we already have that here in this park? And talking with someone in the park, you know, they said, you know, I think it's common knowledge that they own the, the property to the south, and someone said, well, there's so many Joshua trees there, couldn't the town do something about helping them get rid of the Joshua trees? And I tried to explain that it's not the town's, it's the state, but nevertheless, why wouldn't they build, if they could build over there somehow, and if this Joshua tree thing can get resolved somehow, that they could go ahead and build an all-age park next door? And of course, you'll hear all the other concerns of the people about their daily living and whatnot, but I'd like to just see them be able to stay, feel secure, and not have that, that worry and that burdensome thing of, if this park goes this way and all hell breaks loose, where are they going to go? You know, and if they all start selling, then the values are going to go down, of course, and then it's going to be bad for everybody, so thank you very much for your time, and thank you for the staff, too.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Lori Mendoza.
Hello. I've lived in Gates of Spain for 10 years, and 11 years now, and my husband's been sick for 10, and I'm a caregiver, and I take care of four different people in our park, and I take care of somebody in another park. And it is so vital for them to have their neighbors and to have their caregivers be able to come to their home, and we all interact, and they're nurses, and they're physical therapists. It is extremely important. These people can't move, they're all on limited income and stuff, and it's, I have all my clients that are all frazzled. I have a lady in her 90s, and she is so scared that she's going to be homeless because you guys are going to, because they want to take that ability away. These people don't need children running around and babies crying in the middle of the night. We really need to protect our seniors. I'm only 61, but the people I work with, they, they need that, and I'm going to be there someday, and we need this park, and this is the nicest park, and there's other parks, but we need the safety, and we need our neighbors. We all look out for each other. You start moving in families, families aren't going to care, they're going to have teenagers, and a lot of kids are good, and a lot of kids are not. Now we're going to have to a whole new thing of opening up. We've already had people come in and do things that are disruptive to some of our neighbors. We had a lady years ago where kids would come and bang on her door, she lived on the outside circle, and they'd hop the fence, just to wake her up in the middle of the night, and stuff. That's going to happen more and more if this goes into a family park, and we need to protect our seniors. We really do. They deserve what they have, and rent, when we moved in, was $4.20, and we're paying $6.89 as it is, and if it goes to family, they're going to keep raising it, a, a higher percentage, because they'll be allowed to. And I just think it's really imperative that we adopt this, and I'm so grateful that you guys are doing this, and, and I hope that this continues to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
That's all the cards I have.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone online joining us today? Okay. Seeing none, then is there anyone else that'd like to speak in the audience that hasn't had an opportunity? Yeah, please, come on up and, and go ahead and speak. When you're done, if you could fill out a speaker's card, please, please. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Elena Bossi. I moved into Gates of Spain three years ago after my husband passed away and needed to find a mobile home park for seniors. I looked up and down coast of California, there wasn't anything, the rents were exorbitant, and here is a beautiful town with low lighting, for seniors, we can enjoy the mountains and the sky. But as it is, we're all fearful that within six months, people who have moved out, their homes are going to be for sale and families are going to move in. Well, my back is fused from L1 to S1, both hips have been replaced, so it is very scary for me when I am walking around the park, because the street isn't safe. But my question really is, you say that 45-day moratorium, the owners have told us that the changes will take place in six months. So is that six months begin at the end of the 45-day moratorium, or do they run together, parallel? That's my question.
So, so it's two separate things. So the, the Town Council can enact a 45-day moratorium this morning.
Right.
And can then extend that moratorium to extend out to one year at a future council meeting.
Okay, okay.
So it, it won't affect the six-month time period from the mobile home park and what they're attempting to do.
So, I think I'm a little confused, because you say it won't affect. So are we running the 45-day moratorium congruent with the six months that we've been given by the owner?
The 45 days would start today.
Okay.
If it's, if it's approved, and then at a future meeting, the council could extend that for one year.
Okay, so within that, that six months that they've given us, hopefully we have another council meeting, and then we can extend it.
Right.
Okay, just wanted to get that clarification. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. We see one more in the back, please come on up, and when you're done speaking, please fill, leave a speaker's card with the clerk.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just, thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that living, we made a choice when we bought at the, our mobile home at the Gates of Spain, and there were so many choices that we could have made, but we were looking to buy a place where we could have our, as you would say, our golden years, more peaceful, and that was the, the, one of the reasons, or the major reason, that we decided to go that route. And now I'm just saying that please take into consideration the dignity that the seniors should have, because we've, we've earned that, not just because we're seniors, but because we, our life course has brought us to, to this section of our life that we expected. When we signed that contract, we expected to, to have this pleasure in our life, and now it's been threatened to, to be taken away. So I would, I would ask all of you, would please consider the dignity of our lives as we grow even older, and I thank you very much for the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, oh, we have another speaker, I think, in the back? Do we have a microphone we could take him? Looks like, looks like he's already, he's already here. Good energy. There you go. Yeah, that'll work out good. Have, have a seat. Watch that chair, it looks folded up a little bit. There you go. Thank you, sir, for joining us.
Thank you. Is that me?
Yep. Are you up there? Look at you. You're on the big screen.
Hi, Rush, you get here this morning. Len, I can't remember, he's the one that built this complex, and if you don't know anything about mobile homes, most mobile homes are mounted up, and they're up on stilts, and you have to climb up five or six stairs to get into it. Our complex, he built it into the ground. We don't have to walk any steps, we just drive up in front and go right into the front door, maybe one step. It was designed, Len built it designed for seniors. He had become a senior himself, and he designed it like that, and that, we all, it's for us, for older people. Now, you're talking about your mother being 95, I'm 95, and it's, gets to be a little problem when you get a little older, and in this park, we moved in, we've been there about 12, 13 years. It, when you're a senior, you really feel comfortable when you can look out and see people around you, and you know they're about your same age, and you have someone to talk to and understand, you can't, your kids don't understand what you're talking about, you know? I remember when candy bars a nickel, and gasoline, I worked at a station back in Kansas, I'm from Wichita, Kansas, it was 25 cents a gallon, and so, but now, we've all worked through these years to make this country safe. We've lost a lot of our kids in wars so that we could still be here, and I know that the owner, new owners of this complex now, they have a property right north of it and property right south that are joining it, and they've tried to, they put in, I think, they want to see if they can build in the northern part of it, but there's, must be 100 Joshua trees, and there's no way they're going to do that, and I think it's a money thing to make it a. And I think it's a money thing to make it a, with children, a family park, they're gonna make more for it, because they can sell it faster. And I moved here for a reason. My wife, she's an RN and a broker, and she was working some of the hospitals up here, and I'm a residential designer, and I've been doing this for 60, 60-some years. I'm still drawing plans, but the, when she was up here, I decided to drive up, we were living down in Palm Springs area, and I love the drive, and I got up here, and the people in this city are fantastic. I mean, they respect it, the kids respect it. I go out in any place now, and if I need to get on the car or move anything, someone always rushes over to help me. Nowhere else in this country has that happen. And this is a beautiful city, and all these people here, they are wonderful people, and they've helped build it, this country to what it is and has today. And I don't think we should be having, even worry about this type of problem coming up. And most of us have supported all of you, because that's why you're here, when they voted. And so, I want you to really look into this. For us, we've, I know, we've spent over $40,000 in just updating our place as many of the other people have, and we all take pride in our houses. You can drive around, you're not gonna see trash all over the street, you're gonna not see a little noise and everything like that, except I'm having a party, a Christmas party later this month.
Well, maybe we could, I think you're gonna have a big Christmas party.
It's a wonderful place, and the owners, on the other hand, they don't seem to care about us. They're a big company back east, and they own quite a few of them now, and...
Well, I want to thank you for your comments today. We want to, it's obvious that you really love your community, and it looks like you plug in pretty well over there.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Everyone seems to have a smile on their face while you're talking with your comments, and we appreciate your comments today very, very much.
Well, I appreciate y'all listening for it, and God bless all these people here. Thank you.
You are very welcome, and thanks for taking the time today to show us. All right, is that it for public comment? Okay. We have one more. Okay, so we got one more speaker today, and then we'll move on, and we'll thank you for stepping up.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to come up here and talk to you guys. I thought it might be appropriate to hear from somebody younger than 55. I am very much in favor of keeping all of the senior communities 55 and over. Personally, I'm looking forward to it, because I'm 45, so I have 10 more years, and in that next 10 years, I plan on moving into a 55 and over community. So my parents live in Gates of Spain. I do go to their property to take care of them. It is wonderful that they are in a safe environment where they don't have to worry about, you know, kids running around. I agree with everything that everybody has said here. It's so important for our seniors to have a safe place where they're comfortable, where they're around people their age, they can relate and have conversations with each other, and just be in that camaraderie of their age group. So I very much appreciate it. If this gets passed, I'm hoping that we can keep it 55 and over. It's just very important to take care of our seniors, and I personally want to be in a safe place when I'm 55, so I do look forward to that myself. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. So I would, I'd still like to ask one more question. Is anyone that has any concerns tonight, just by a show of hands, you don't have to speak or anything, about the item today that we're talking about? Okay. That they, that they don't want it to occur? Is there anyone that doesn't want it to occur? Okay.
Oh, you're talking about not...
I'm asking the opposite of what we have on the agendas today. Is there anyone that does not want Agenda Item 1 to be passed? Okay. And that's important to me. You know, I see, actually, not just a roomful of people, I see our community right there. So that's very important to me to know that. So we'll bring it back to the council for any last comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank you for everyone's input. Wonderful time to come together and share your opinions, and I appreciate all the support. How many people in the audience, if you'd raise your hand, know of somebody in your community, your park or another park, that either because of time or because of physical limitations would have liked to have been here and supported this more time? I think most everyone has somebody they know that could have been here or wanted to be here, but maybe couldn't. Again, I want to thank the staff for putting this meeting together and also putting it in the morning, in the middle of the day, and so we're not late-night meetings that can go on to 10 or 11 o'clock or whatever. So I appreciate the, being able to hear from you and having this meeting during the day. So other than that, I thank everyone for their feedback. I would like to move the item unless there's further discussion, that we would support this moratorium urgency ordinance as written.
So we have a motion? And we have a second?
A second.
Okay.
Councilmembers Abel.
Yes.
Lombardo.
Absolutely, yes.
Schooler.
Yes.
And Mayor Dennison.
Yes. So, thank you. I'd like to thank everyone once again for coming out today, getting up early and joining us. This is very important to us, because it is our community. We are here as spokespeople, council members, for you, and I'm glad that you've taken advantage to come here today and let us know how you feel. With that, this meeting is adjourned.